Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council. This is the May 1st, 2018 meeting. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mayor Pro Tem Dozier for our invocation.
Please bow your head. Dear Father, we welcome you to this meeting tonight. We honor your presence as we also honor our neighbors who view themselves as their brothers or sisters keeper. We pray for your guidance as we make decisions in the best interest of the people of Apex, your people, in your name we pray. Amen.
Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome tonight. If you intend to stay for any length of time tonight, I hope you've got a chance to get the agenda. It's a staple pieces of paper out there. They're the white ones. Feel free to go get one. If you missed them, they're out on the podium right outside the door. And if you intend to speak tonight, there's two things you need to know. One, these are your speaking guidelines, so during public speaking, please be familiar with them before you come up. The second thing you need to know is there are yellow sheets up here that are the sign-up sheets. Those yellow sign-up sheets are for either the public forum or public hearings. Be sure to sign the correct sheet. Read the label at the top so you'll know which one is yours. With that, we now begin with presentation number one. Mayor Pro Tem Dozier, I think, would like to introduce the Think Apex Awards.
Sure. Let's get started. You want to join us up front?
All right.
Think Apex was created in 2014 as an initiative to encourage local mindset. Started out thinking about Apex communities, businesses, residents, and visitors, and then thought, well, it'd be great to take another step and to recognize local business, individuals, and nonprofit organizations for their dedicated service to others and to our community as a whole. Nominations were received through a public online process, and winners were selected by a group that includes some previous Think Apex Award recipients from the past two years. So, at this time, I'd like to recognize all of this year's nominees. So, when I call your name, if you would stand up. When I call your name or the name of your organization, if you would please stand and remain standing, and then when all names are called, we'll hold your applause, please, everyone. And when all names are called, then we can applaud everybody, and then we'll ask you to have a seat. So, the nominees for the individual or group category are Bethany and Nick Bryant, Catherine and Luke Dobbins, Graham Wilson, Harold Dublitt, Captain Jacques Gilbert, stand-in, Calabria Gilbert, Mayor Lance Olive, already standing, Chief John Letney, Karen and Todd Hilton, Chris Taft Miller, Mindy Buchanan, Tahira Aviola Hyman, Tina Sherman, Tom Colwell, and the Apex Town Council, already standing. The nominees for the business category are Apex Dental Group, Carraba's Italian Grill in Apex, Campari Foods, Neighbor Boy Incorporated, Stylish Living. And finally, the nominees for the nonprofit category are Apex Sunrise Rotary Foundation, Apex Historical Society, Blue Lights College, I assume, okay, Citizens Assisting Police in Apex, or Kappa, and Peak UMC. All right. So, now, if we could give everyone a round of applause for your service. So, thank you. You may all be seated. So, now, it's time for me to announce the top thinker and the honorable mention for each category. So, for the individual group category, this individual is known for their dedication to others. As a community collaborator, this individual brought together nearly 200 families to donate time, money, and gifts to enrich the lives of those in need. This program, called Bella Angels, donated hundreds of gifts to 36 Apex families in need. The honorable mention award goes to, in the individual category, goes to Chris Taft Miller. So, please join us up here. All right, congratulations.
Congratulations.
So, the top thinker in this category is known for being a leader amongst her peers and community members. By bringing together a large group of organizers, this individual was able to host an event that brought awareness to an ongoing community problem. This high schooler started a nonprofit organization named Opioids to Rest, which has brought significant awareness to the issue we're dealing with today of opioid use. The top thinker award in the individual category goes to Tahira Aviola Hyman. So, this is her award, and I'll accept it for her. So, now, for the business category. This business is known for launching an apparel project that benefits patients at a local children's hospital. Each time a onesie is sold in their store, they hand-deliver a special edition onesie to the hospital. A business that has already delivered nearly 200 onesies and raised over $2,000 for a local hospital, the honorable mention in the business category goes to Stylish Living. The top thinker in this category is a business known for bringing together a group of professionals and volunteers to host a medical clinic for those who cannot afford care. The business went even further to provide free screenings before the clinic and complimentary care afterward. A business that utilizes its skill set to change the world one life at a time. The top thinker award in the business category goes to Apex Dental Group. community through monthly service projects. This organization also challenges its members to demonstrate the peak of good neighboring by serving their neighbors through unique acts of service. An organization known for serving the Apex community with intention and also purpose, the honorable mention in the nonprofit category goes to Peak UMC. The top thinker in this category is a nonprofit organization known for assisting the Apex Police Department at multiple special events. This organization is also dedicated to offering child and medical identification cards and has created over 350 IDs. An organization known for its community involvement and hours of volunteering for all of us, the top thinker in the nonprofit category is Citizens Assisting Police in Apex. So, on behalf of the Think Apex team and the town of Apex, and the town council and Mayor Olive, we thank you all for coming out tonight. Congratulations again to all nominees. You've done great work in thinking about your town first. And congratulations to all those who were able to win this evening. Your stories are inspirational and memorable. We have great conversations as people talk about the nominees, and it's hard to select just one. You've done so much great work in this community. You do see yourself as your brother or sister's keeper. We appreciate that. So, in closing, I want to encourage you tonight to continue doing what you've always been doing, is fostering a local mindset, and to support and invest in the local and unique aspects of our community. And I think what's special about this is we can come together this evening and really enjoy, you know, representing our towns and also acknowledging good work, good service, and that there's great people in this town. So, thank you so much. It is an honor to serve you. Oh, please, photo. I think we want to come forward. All the nominees and winners this evening, come forward for a large group photo. Okay. And then, okay, council's going to go behind, and you all going to fill it back.
Obviously, you have a lot of people, so anyone that is smaller and sapper, stand towards the front. Anyone that's very tall, can change that.
Yeah. I don't know. Whatever promises.
Why did I put it on my own money?
Well, that's going to be awesome. If you're always going to stand forward, and if you're always back, and if you walk as though you're like this bright shoulder back, it's going to be like, oh, good job. I mean, thank you, everyone. And then winners, please just stay right here. I'm going to take a quick.
Thank you, everybody.
If you're an award winner for tonight's ceremony, please stay right here. It should be six p.m. Yes. Honorable mention and top thinker. Everyone's up here.
That should be five, right? We're missing one. There she is.
We're just, yes, we're just two people. Then we've got one person. Show, okay. And it's awarded. You're here. Yeah, please join us. No, thank you. You are on top thinker.
Oh. Thank you. I'm sorry, thank you.
All right. You go. All right, go on, one second. Kyle, I'm going to get you to come out, and I'm going to get our two individuals to stand together. So, you guys, you are here. Stylish Living, you're right here. Kappa, you're up, thank you. Hold on one second.
Uh-oh.
We got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to, um, I'm going to do a reenactment.
We'll come down. There it is. Historic.
Can I have your certificate up here for you?
There you go.
If you want to be here, we'd like you up there.
Let me give it to you. Yeah, like we're doing it for the first time. I'll say, congratulations. Put it right here, and now we look at the camera. Awesome. Congratulations.
Maybe you'll have to show her if she wanted to get some punch or whatever.
And there's cake, too. We don't want to forget about that.
That's for a box.
I know. I could've got some of the cake, and that's why I didn't bring it to you.
The greens, the greens up there.
You have to tell me how good it was, but I didn't know.
It was. I had to go for some of that lime sherbet in there. That was the best.
Drink it, and I did. A dessert.
Yep. The night it is. Think Apex.
It's different. It's like we're in the bones right now. All right, we're back. Great. I didn't put that back, I'm sorry. I did that unsupervised earlier. At this time, we'll now move to presentation number two. Shannon Cox, the senior transportation planner and town of Apex representative on the Wake Transit Planning Advisory Committee, has an update for us.
Yes, thank you. So, the purpose of this presentation tonight is to provide a few updates about what's been happening with Wake Transit Plan implementation, as well as some public outreach that will be happening in Apex, as well as across the region this spring. And just for some background, this is the first time you're seeing Go Forward. This is the new brand for the Wake Transit Plan, as well as the Durham Orange Light Rail Plan. So, you'll be seeing more of that. So, as a reminder for everyone, in November 2016, Wake County voters approved a transit dedicated tax to expand and better connect our region through a transit network. There were four kind of big moves as part of this plan, connecting the region, connecting all Wake County communities, providing frequent, reliable urban mobility, and enhancing access to transit. The way that that was to be accomplished is by expanding bus service, along with that, improving bus stops and shelters, implementing bus rapid transit along four major congested corridors, north, south, east, and west of downtown Raleigh, and finally, building a 37-mile commuter rail system that's going to go from Garner through Raleigh, NC State, Cary, Morrisville, Research Triangle Park, and into Durham. So, the goal is that when all of this is completed, which is a 10-year vision, 54% of the homes and 80% of the jobs in Wake County will be in walking distance of a transit stop. So, the Wake Transit Plan was a vision document. It didn't give a lot of information about next steps, or timing, or how all of this was going to be accomplished. So, the Go Forward partners have undertaken two major studies, the Wake Transit Bus Plan and the Major Investment Study, which looks at commuter rail and bus rapid transit, to figure out the phasing of these improvements, which transit agencies will lead each piece of this, and the overall timing. So, tonight, I want to focus a little bit more on the Wake Transit Bus Plan, one of the two major studies, because the bus services are really what we'll see on the ground in Apex. The purpose of this specific plan is to look at all of the bus service improvements and phase which will come first, second, and third. They'll also look at some specific alignments and bus stop locations. The focus is to make some early investments in bus service improvements, and then the bus rapid transit and commuter rail will come later. So, this spring, the project team leading the bus plan will be gathering input from the public on the phasing of major improvements. Then they'll come back out in late summer to look at specific alignments and stop locations. The next three or four slides show what they recommended in their draft phasing plan. So, this first slide shows existing transit service across Wake County, and you can see that here in Apex, we have one route that goes to RTP and one route that goes to Raleigh. These are peak hour only, and they run every 60 minutes. The draft phasing plan recommends an early investment for improvements in Apex. That will include a connection from Holly Springs through Apex to Cary that would be peak hour, running every 60 minutes, and improving our connection to Raleigh so that it runs all day. Remember, these lines are showing connections, not specific routes at this time. Sorry, the draft phasing plan is recommending these changes to occur between 2019 and 2021.
Should we chime in now, or at the end?
Go ahead.
Okay. That one from Apex to Cary is a new one, because I studied this pretty deeply when this was happening. Yeah, and I recognize that one as being one that was on the original.
So, right now, we do have stops that go to Cary, but they go from Cary, through Cary, and then into Raleigh. What they're looking at as part of the bus plan is having a more direct connection to Cary that's faster, and a more direct connection to Raleigh that's faster.
Is that a peak one? I can't really see it. Is it peak, or is it?
This is peak, yes. But I do have some more information that you'll see in a little bit.
When you talk about peak, how many times? You said once an hour, but.
So, I think peak hours are from, I think, 6:00 to 9:00, and about 4:00 to 7:00.
Okay, so, we're talking six times a day, maybe?
About, yeah, it's for your commute. Yep. The other part that's not addressed in the presentation tonight, but it is part of the Wake Transit Plan, just so the audience hears this, is the community funding area program that provides some money if Apex would want to implement enhancements beyond what's in the plan, there will be some money available for local match for that. So, that's something we're still looking at. Okay, so, 2022 to 2024, again, just focusing on increasing bus services, adding more frequent connections to Garner, a new connection to Wake Forest, and improving the frequency to Cary, Morrisville, and RTP. And then, when we would see the bus rapid transit, which is shown in red, and the commuter rail here in the dashed line, is toward the end of the 10-year period between 2025 and 2027. What's not shown here is there will also be a frequent bus network serving downtown Raleigh that's every 15 minutes or less. So, just to reiterate, the goal for this spring public outreach is to continue to spread the word about the Wake Transit Plan and educate the public, to gather feedback on the proposed phasing of bus improvements, to gather input on potential bus rapid transit alignments and station locations. They will be having four formal public meetings. The first was actually already this week, 10 pop-up meetings at transit stations, a presence at 16 community events, and then there's an online survey. The URL for the survey is here. The remaining public meetings are on May 3rd, 14th, and 15th, two in Raleigh and one in Cary. And then, we will actually have a Go Triangle Bus with boards and information to hand out at the Peak Fest on May 5th, and at the Touch a Truck event on May 20th. I would love for everybody to stop by those events. Okay, so, here's the other piece. This is added information. This is not part of the bus plan. The town of Cary is funding an additional study called the Western Wake Comprehensive Transit Operations Analysis. It's a long one. And they've asked the town of Morrisville and town of Apex to participate in that. The motivation for this study was that the town has received quite a bit of input from their public on the west part of Cary, that the current service going from west Cary to downtown Cary is not addressing all of their needs, and that they really need more service between Morrisville, west Cary, and Apex. So, they will be evaluating their current services and looking at potential recommendations to increase survey between our towns. This is not a long-term vision-type planning effort. This is short-term, within the next two years type of improvements. We will be having an open house very quickly in Apex on May 17th, between 4:00 p.m. and 6:00 p.m. It'll be here in Town Hall on the third floor. I'd love for you all to stop by that. I'm hoping that we can also get some of the information about the bus plan at this meeting, so still working on that. There's more information at GoForwardNC.org, or you can reach me by email or phone. Did you have any other questions?
You didn't talk about too much with the community matching part of this. Does that look, let's say Apex does that, would that look like a local circulator-type bus, or would it look like increasing frequency between Apex and Raleigh, Apex and Cary, Apex and RTP? Or is it kind of open to interpretation?
It's really open, and that was by design. The purpose of that program is to give municipalities who aren't receiving extensive service in the first 10 years of the transit funding, to enhance that service with a vision that they kind of develop. So, it could be a circulator, it could be on-call service, like enhancing Wake Trax, or it could be adding to our regional connections. It could even be supplementing Uber. So, really, it's wide open, and there's a project going on now to develop the program management plan for how those projects will be scored, it'll be competitive, what will be required as far as public engagement and vetting, and the match, and all of that information.
And does it run out after 10 years?
So, right now, all we have is a 10-year plan, but that money will continue to be collected. So, the proposal is that every four years, the vision document, the Wake Transit Plan will be updated. So, that program is expected to continue.
Okay. One more, sorry. With that potential Western Wake thing, even though Cary is involved, would that exclude us from those kind of matching funds?
That Western Wake project is not related to... Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. You're saying because they're a part of this, are we no longer eligible? Okay. No, the expectation is that most communities will likely partner with a transit service provider to enhance their services and develop their plans. Because there's so many requirements around transit with FTA and reporting, probably most communities will go that route, so we'd still be eligible if we decided to partner with Cary. There's more information at GoForwardNC.org, or you can reach me by email or phone. Did you have any other questions?
You didn't talk about too much with the, with the community matching part of this. Is, does that look, let's say Apex does that, would that look like a local circulator-type bus, or would it look like increasing frequency between Apex and Raleigh, Apex and Cary, Apex and RTP? Or is it kind of open to interpretation?
It's really open, and that was by design. The purpose of that program is to give municipalities who aren't receiving extensive service in the first 10 years of the transit funding, to enhance that service with a vision that they kind of develop. So, it could be a circulator, it could be, it could be on-call service, like enhancing Wake Trax, or it could be adding to our regional connections. It could even be supplementing Uber. So, really, it's wide open, and there's a project going on now to develop the program management plan for how those projects will be scored, it'll be competitive, what will be required as far as public engagement and vetting, and the match, and all of that information.
And does it run out after 10 years?
So, right now, all we have is a 10-year plan, but that money will continue to be collected. So, the proposal is that every four years, the vision document, the Wake Transit Plan will be updated. So, that program is expected to continue.
Okay. One more, sorry. With the, with that potential Western Wake thing, even though Cary is involved, would that exclude us from those kind of matching funds?
That Western Wake project is not related to, oh, okay, I see what you're saying. You're saying because they're a part of this, are we no longer eligible? Okay. No, the expectation is that most communities will likely partner with a transit service provider to enhance their services and develop their plans. Because there's so many requirements around transit with FTA and reporting, probably most communities will go that route, so if, we'd still be eligible if we decided to partner with Cary. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Shannon. Before we get to the consent agenda, I do have one other thing to share, and I might, I might want to put on my glasses for this. If you'll hang with me for a second. So, this is a proclamation for next week, so I wanted to share this with everybody. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of the local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now, therefore, I, Lance Olive, mayor of the town of Apex, do recognize the week of May 6th through May 12th, 2018, as Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend our appreciation to our town clerk, Donna Hosh, who's over there looking so cute with her little squinty smile, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And I've signed this, and I'd like for you to find a place to put this, if you don't mind, Ms. Donna. All right, I'm gonna bring this over to you. Take all of it. All right, very good, very good. She's gonna find a good place to put that.
She can't go home.
Not yet. No sick days. We do thank you sincerely, and we hope that next week is recognized by all for municipal clerks. So, at this time, I'd like to point you to the consent agenda. Consent agenda are the items that we typically enact with a single motion, because they're typically considered to be non-controversial. Therefore, we group them all together so that we can do that. However, if a council member wishes to pull something for further discussion, they certainly may do so. So, at this time, I'll ask if there's any item that needs to be pulled, or if there is a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pass the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not hearing any, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The consent agenda is passed. We now move to setting the regular agenda for the night, and that is on page four. If you look at the staple sheet, we have everything laid out for us. I don't know of any agenda changes. I do know that we might have a discussion topic at the end, but that's not really an agenda change, we may just have a conversation. With that said, I'll ask if there are any agenda items that anyone needs to change, or is there a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, and discussion on that. All in favor of approving the agenda as submitted indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the regular meeting agenda is set. We now move to public forum. Public forum is a time where you get to tell us what you like, what you don't like, what you like for us to keep in mind or consider, and as the town clerk brings me the public forum sheet, I will be calling names as they come through. Public forum is a one-way conversation. Hopefully, by now, if you intend to speak, you've got a chance to look at the guidelines so that you can follow those. We do have a green light, red light system up there to keep you honest. Let's see, for public forum, we have Mr. Nick Bryant, who wishes to speak. Come on up, Mr. Bryant, and I'll, I'll ask you to please state your name and address for the record.
Nick Bryant.
The new Apex resident, Nick Bryant.
1023 New Dover Road.
There we go.
All right. Yes, I just closed on a house in Apex last night, yesterday. We're very excited about that. But to, thank you, Mayor and Council, for hearing me. This is in regards to the budget, of course, today, and especially public art. So, with that, I'll just make it real quick. As a new resident, and of course, a business owner downtown, my wife and I, we look forward to enjoying public art in and around Apex. We hope that you can find the money in the budget, and we feel that art is an investment in our community, excuse me, community, enhancing our beautiful town from the historic downtown through the greenways and into the parks. That's all I have to say, but again, please consider any monies for public art. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bryant. Having reached the end of the list, I'll close the public hearing, our public forum time, and now we move into the public hearings. Public hearing number one is a chance for citizen input on the fiscal year 2018 and 19 town budget, and before we open the public hearing, our Assistant Town Manager, Sean Purvis, is going to share some information, and it will be in a graphical form, I understand.
It will, and, excuse me, pardon me, I'm getting over the remnants of a cold, so I apologize, I'm sorry. I'm a little hoarse here.
All right, Mayor Olive and Town Council, good evening. The purpose of this presentation is just to provide a brief summary before you open up the public hearing, so that we can go over the recommended budget for fiscal, fiscal year 1819. The budget has been prepared over the course of several months, countless hours of meetings and discussion, and evaluation which you and staff have been a part of. The priorities set by council will be evident in the budget. Those include high-performance government, active and engaged citizenry, sustained development and infrastructure, safe and secure community, and economic vitality. Your guidance through those priorities, as well as the citizen survey, were very helpful this year in preparing the budget. As you'll see, the overall recommended budget for fiscal 1819 totals about $129.3 million. This is about 1% increase over the current year's amended budget, and the budget is, of course, balanced, and it's done so with an increase in the tax rate, adjustments to some utility rates, and with some allocation of reserves. The three major funds total more than $122 million of this total, with the general fund representing the largest portion, and there is about $7 million in capital project funds that are also separate from those three major funds that will take place in the coming year. Moving to the general fund, the general fund for 1819 is recommended at $61.4 million. This is a 12% increase over the current year. It does include a 3.5 cent recommended increase. This is 1.5 cent for the debt service related to the bond issue, the bond issue, and the referendum from this past November, as well as an additional 2 cents primarily to increase our transportation efforts and to enhance public safety. Also, to improve streets and sidewalks, the budget does include a recommendation to increase the motor vehicle tax by another $5 to $20. This increases it by about $180,000, but the staff also recommends moving the total revenue from the $20, which is close to $700,000, to be solely dedicated to transportation, meaning sidewalks and street improvements. By all, $5 of it can be used for anything. It's a general revenue source, but we recommend all of it go toward transportation. Excuse me. There are also adjustments in the solid waste fee and yard waste. The solid waste fee is about 1.5% and a little under a dollar to the yard waste fee, and all fee recommendations can be found in your budget that you've been, that you've been provided, as well as online, and there is a comprehensive fee schedule in there with all changes for all funds. Also, in the general fund, capital projects such as our annual street resurfacing, also including sidewalk improvements and construction, a new ladder truck for fire department, just to name a few, these, the capital projects make up about 12% of the general fund budget, and overall, public safety makes up 42% of the general fund budget. So, again, you can see the priorities that have been set, and the highest are, take up majority of what is recommended in the fiscal year 1819 budget. Moving on to the electric fund, the electric fund is a little over $40 million. There is an increase of the rates recommended at 2.15%. We actually just experienced a rate increase for us as a town as of April 1st for our provider that we purchased from, from the municipal power agency. This will actually, there'll be another increase this, next April as well, so we're trying to get in the middle of that rate increase to make sure that we offset or cover those costs. Overall, this budget is down a little under 2% from the current year, mainly due to some transfers for, for capital projects. Hardly any debt relative in this fund, operating very well, about 20% fund balance, so things are, are moving along on the electric fund. And with the water and sewer, the last of the major funds, and the smallest of our major funds, a little over $21 million. This is an increase of 6.5%, that's mainly driven by the fact that over the last calendar year, our customer count increased by 25%. You can see there's a few positions being added, and capital outlay amounts for about $3 to $4 million within this fund. We are recommending no changes in the water rates, as our study from last year indicated that water actually was sustaining itself, but the sewer was actually not. So, we are following that, continuing that study recommendation to increase sewer rates by 4.3% this year. This does amount, the average user, average household, about 5,000, between 5,000 and 6,000 gallons a month, it'll amount to about $1.72 more per month in their, their monthly bill. And with that, that is all I have for the overall budget. I stand here, stand by and answer any quick questions you may have related to the budget. Otherwise, I'll step aside and turn off the call, and allow any, any citizen that would like to make comment for you on my behalf.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about what Sean has presented in these colorful infographics?
Can you remind me, or all of us, about the timelines going forward with this?
So, with our, with the budget, this is the public hearing, we actually have time, but we have to adopt, council has to adopt the budget prior to July 1st. So, we have some time, we're actually, you know, well, well ahead of that schedule that's needed. What the calendar has programmed out was, you've had, we've gone through our workshops, you've been presented the budget and the CIP, the capital budget, which is also in there. We have this, this public hearing as of today. The calendar calls for potentially one more workshop, if so desired, based on public comment we have, and anything council would like to discuss in two weeks, and then the first, your first meeting in June would be the adoption, the official adoption of the budget. That's what's calendared. It's always subject to change depending on what we hear, and if things do change, but we try and plan it out. So, I think that meeting is June 4th, somewhere around there, so whenever that meeting would be, it would be approved, and then it would go into effect on July 1st.
Can I, I do have a couple of questions. Do you, the number of employees added, I was trying to do the math on, was it 20?
So, the total is 34. 28 in general fund, two in electric, and four in water and sewer.
And then, I believe you sent us a, there's a memorandum there with the 2%, or the 2 cent tax increase, what is gonna be spent on, correct?
Yes, we, you did receive a memo. The original recommended budget only included the 1.5 cent per council's direction to, mainly, primarily for transportation and public safety. We, the 2 cents was added as a recommended, recommendation. And I'm sorry, Mr. Moore, did you want some of those items that were included in that, or?
We have that memo.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Yeah, 75% of that 2 cents was dedicated to either transportation or public safety, and most of the rest was actually for either facility repairs, so we maintain our assets, or technology upgrades, so, those sort of things, so.
You said 75% to transportation and public safety?
Yes, of the, of the additional 2 cents.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, if there's no objection, I'll open the public hearing, and seeing that I have no sign-ups for the public hearing on the budget, I'll close the public hearing. And before we leave this item, I just, I would like to say, thanks for the staff for hanging around. I know you were here in case we had some questions on the budget. I think there will be a topic related to a resource officer later in the evening, and we'll have that, I'd like to do that later in the evening, so if we can, you know, let whichever staff need to go, go, and whichever ones can stay around for that one topic, that'd be great. All right, thank you very much, and I appreciate the work that Sean and his budget staff have done. Every year, our budget gets cleaner, it gets more easy to follow. It's also getting bigger, which is kind of a feat that seems impossible, right? Make something bigger, and it seems like it should get more complicated, but it's actually getting a little easier to understand, and getting more organized, and really appreciative of the changes we've seen. I know anybody who's looked at a budget, you know, for any other organization, or even this one, from years gone by, you know, we've taken this to the next level, and I appreciate the efforts there. We now go to public hearing number two. Public hearing number two is the possible annexation for a piece of property for Salem Baptist Church. It's about two acres over on Salem Church Road, and Diane Ken is presenting tonight.
Good evening.
Oops, excuse me.
So, just to orient you to the site, this is Davis Drive, this is Salem Church Road here. This back here is DJ's Berry Patch. These two properties are general in vicinity of Salem Baptist Church. They are owned by the church, and the church would like to annex them in order to get public water and sewer so that they can rent them out, and so, staff does recommend approval.
All right, questions for Diane?
And requested by the church, you said?
Yes, state law requires that we don't do involuntary annexation.
Thank you. All right, not hearing any questions. I will open the public hearing, and seeing that no one has signed up, I will close the public hearing, refer the matter back to council for possible motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll say.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now go to public hearing number three, which is a quasi-judicial public hearing. So, we're the quasi-judicial public hearing, there is a formal process, and if you haven't sat through one before, you get to experience it right now. Congratulations. We'll go through this process, I'll read through, there's some things I read through to go through. The town attorney will always be cocked one ear this way, make sure we're following the law. The town council normally functions in the legislative capacity. Special use permit hearings are quasi-judicial, which means that the council acts essentially as a court of law. The burden is upon the applicant for the special use permit to put on evidence to show that they meet all the criteria found in the town's UDO. Anyone opposed to the application must put on similar evidence of a similar kind, showing that the criteria have not been met. Testimony must be given under oath. All testimony and evidence provided to the council must be competent, material, and substantial. Pursuant to the North Carolina general statutes, competent evidence does not include opinion testimony of lay witnesses on certain matters. Hearsay evidence will not be admitted. The parties have the right to cross-examine witnesses and to present rebuttal evidence. The town council will apply the criteria contained in the UDO and make its decision based on the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing. The town council will now take up the case of the special use permit number 18 SUP 01 for the Western Wake Regional Water Reclamation Facility, Public Safety Tower located at 3500 Reclamation Road. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who intends to speak tonight, especially if you signed the sheet for this, please come up and let the town clerk perform your swearing-in with you, and she will give you instructions, please follow them. After all, it is coming up on Municipal Clerk's Week.
Oh, my goodness. I love the transfers of marriage things, right? Magical.
At this time, I'd like to ask the council to make sure they have their checklist, should look like this, so please have that out while we're going through. That way, when we come to the time, you can be taking notes along the way on it, so when we ask a question, we won't have to read through the whole sheet, we'll just ask you, do you have any comments on that sheet? At this time, I'd like to ask for the applicant to identify him or herself, and this is simply identification at this point, sir?
I understand.
Okay.
I'm Tom Johnson, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Williams Mullen, 301 Fayetteville.
I'm an attorney with the law firm of Williams Mullen, 301 Fayetteville Street, Suite 1700 in Raleigh, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there, let's see, who's, I'm sorry. Let's see, and you have supporters, can you just simply quickly point to who they are? And we'll call them at the appropriate time.
Right. And I just, I got everybody sworn in in case there were questions, but the main presenter will be John Higgins, who's the chief technology officer for Wake County.
All right.
Who can explain it.
Okay.
And I do have others too that I would call as needed.
All right. And is there anyone here who wishes to put on an opposition case? All right, let the record show, there's no one identifying themselves as opposition. That should make the quasi judicial public hearing go pretty smoothly. At this time, I'd like to ask all council members if they've had any communications about this case prior to this evening? If they have any relational or financial conflicts related to this case? And whether or not you feel you can impartially decide this based on the evidence and solely on the evidence presented tonight? And I'll start with Councilman Jensen as I normally do.
No communications, no relational conflicts, and I can make a reasonable decision tonight.
All right, very good. Thank you.
I have had no communication, no relation, no relationships, and I can make an impartial decision.
All right.
No communications can be impartial and have no conflicts.
All right. I as well have had no communications, have no conflicts, and if I need to vote, I will be able to vote impartially.
I have had no communications, no relationships, no conflicts, and I can vote impartially.
Had no communication, no relation, and I can make an impartial decision.
All right, thank you. Have any council members viewed the site as a result of knowing this was on the agenda? Please indicate.
No.
All right. No one has indicated, so we'll let the record show that no one has gone to visit the site. Opening statements, at this time, I'd like to ask if staff has an opening statement?
Yes, sir.
All right, no opening statement. All right, Mr. Applicant, that would be Mr. Johnson. Feel free to make your opening statement.
I don't really have any opening statement. I'll let Ms. Mayo make her presentation, then I'll make mine.
All right. That sounds fine. All right, at this time, I'll ask staff to present evidence and then we will give opportunities for cross-examination of the evidence.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Mayo. I'm a planner with the Town of Apex. I've been working here for about four and a half years. I have a master's degree in city planning and I am AICP certified. The proposed tower is located at, as the mayor said, at 3,500 Reclamation Road. This is the location of the Western Wake Water Reclamation, wastewater reclamation facility. Western Wake Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility. Yes, there we go. That is a tongue twister, ladies and gentlemen.
Better afternoon.
Just to give you an idea of where we are, this is old US-1 here. This is new US-1. This is Sharon Harris Road. Sharon Harris is down here. And New Hill Holloman Road here. The parcel's currently zoned residential agricultural. It's surrounded by primarily Wake County zoning districts. To the east, there are a couple of parcels that were recently rezoned and annexed into the town and zone medium density conditional zoning. The properties surrounding the parcel are primarily used as either agricultural, single family, or are vacant parcels. The property is identified as industrial employment on the 2030 land use map, and this is consistent with what's being presented. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on January 24th, 2018. That neighborhood meeting report is in your staff report. The site is currently, I'm sorry, the reclamation facility was approved in 2011 and completed in 2014. The proposed location within the site, shown here, is a minimum of 700 feet from any property line. It's a little bit over 700 actually. As Apex has expanded into Western Wake County, it's become more and more difficult for our emergency responders to maintain radio contact with each other when they're responding to an emergency. This tower is being proposed in order to rectify those communication problems. The applicant is requesting to build a 400-foot tall public safety communication tower. The only associated structures will be the required electrical cabinets necessary to operate the tower and the antenna. This use is required to meet any and all supplemental standards listed in section 4.4 of the UDO. Those supplemental standards have been listed at the end of your staff report. It's on pages three and four. The proposed tower does meet all the supplemental standards listed in the UDO. All of the RCA proposed for the facility was dedicated when the facility was finished, when the actual reclamation facility was finished. No changes to that RCA are being proposed. This project will not connect to Town of Apex Water and Sewer Utilities. There's no need. The project is required to provide screening from off-site view. The required screening is being met using the existing vegetation around the exterior, the required fence. It may be a little difficult to see here, but there is a bubble line here that shows the existence of significant vegetation all the way around. And since from this direction down, it is over 700 feet to the perimeter, it was determined that that was sufficient to meet that screening requirement. Section 8.3 of the UDO requires two parking spaces for the tower, which are shown on the plan. They're located right here. The proposed safety tower is consistent with the Apex Transportation Plan. The applicant has obtained permission from the underlying property owners to access the site using the, using the private road that connects to Sharon Harris Road. The planning staff recommends approval as shown. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer those for you.
All right, thank you, Shelley. At this time, I'll ask council if you have any cross-examination questions for Ms. Mayo.
Will this tower, okay, so there's, is there any chance that the water treatment plant would want to expand in the future and this will prevent any sort of expansion?
Not that I'm aware of, but I cannot actually answer that particular. I know that this was set aside where it is because it's not an area that was expected to expand into.
Okay.
But I don't have intimate knowledge of the anticipated expansion plans for the facility, if any.
Okay.
All right, any others? All right, let me ask the applicant, do you have any cross-examination questions for the evidence presented? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayo. At this time, I'll ask the applicant to please step forward and present evidence.
As I said earlier, my name is Tom Johnson. I'm the attorney representing the applicant. And on the application, it's both the Town of Apex and the Town of Cary who operate that facility, you've both signed on as applicant. So I think in terms of the concerns about future expansion, obviously, they had concurred in that in submitting the application. And also, I do concur with what Ms. Mayo presented as far as the evidence that she presented and concur with the recommendation, of course. It's a 400-foot telecommunications tower for public safety. I want to, some of these are kind of duplicitous. I think this is the best thing to show. The county, and I'll have Mr. Higgins come up in just a moment, has been upgrading the public safety communication system. And part of that is to improve service in this area of the county where there's been tremendous growth and tremendous need for that. This shows without this facility, what kind of coverage you have. The white dots in the corner, see everything's green, but the white dots in the corner are actual areas where there is not sufficient coverage for public safety in this part of the county. That's what this tower is intended to, that's the goal of this tower and what this tower is intended to do, because if you look at the next slide, you'll see those white dots go away. And now, the entire purpose of this facility is to provide that coverage, it just doesn't exist now. This is consistent with the other towers you can see here on the map or the other towers that exist as part of that system. And those are throughout the county. But let me have, I want to have Mr. Higgins come up, the chief technology officer, and explain what's been going on with the system, how this is part of the whole process, and is a part of that overall plan.
Hey, good evening. I am John Higgins. I am the IT director and chief technology officer for Wake County Information Services. In addition to managing the IT department, I also have responsibility for the county's public safety systems, which include the 800 megahertz radio system. And that system is actually used by the majority of first responders in the county, obviously for critical emergency communications. Appreciate the opportunity, thank, to talk, talk to you tonight and I appreciate your consideration. The tower is needed to improve communication capabilities of the public safety first responders that operate in that area. As you've seen on the map, we have poor coverage in that area. And just a little bit of background on the radio system and the problem we are addressing, it originally came online in 2004, and at that time, we had 20 agencies on the system, about 3,500 users. And since that time, utilization of the system has grown to about 50 fire EMS and law enforcement agencies and about 7,700 radios on the system. And actually, about 3,000 pagers, fire and EMS entities use paging as an alternative means of communication. Obviously, it's no surprise the growth you've seen in our system utilization mirrors really close to what's happening in the county. And since the system was originally designed in early 2000s, basically around 2000 to 2002, the county's seen about 400,000 people move in. So significant change in, in that and the construction that has occurred in basically every corner of the county. With population growth and new construction, there are always unwanted consequences and radio system coverage is mine. We do not have coverage in certain areas of the county today. And to keep pace with that, though, the county is doing a full upgrade of the system right now. It's a multi-million dollar, multi-year project. And some of the benefits that we expect to see from the upgrade are moving the existing platform from legacy analog technology to digital technology. Analog is kind of end of life. The other is significant capacity and obviously coverage improvements. So we actually have five tower expansion proposed as part of the upgrade. We're adding channel capacity in Fuquay Varina, and that's just basically to serve more call volume at our tower there. We're currently building a new tower in partnership with the Highway Patrol in the Creedmoor area, basically the intersection of 98 and Creedmoor Road, and that's to improve coverage there. Partnering with the Town of Cary to add our equipment to one of their existing towers off of Harrison Avenue. They, they obviously have equipment there. We do not today, so co-location agreement to improve coverage in basically the airport and Bay Leaf area. Partnering with City of Raleigh to build a new tower at the west, the wastewater treatment plant off Battle Bridge Road towards the Clayton southeastern part of the county to improve coverage. And obviously, this tower. Some of the specific trouble areas that we've had reported over the last probably six months, sheriff's office reported poor radio reception in and around the area of New Hill along the US-1 corridor. Basically, this is south of the New Hill Holloman Road exit. We've had a lot of complaints there. EMS has had several complaints in that area as well as a recent call where communications were very poor in a residence, which was a problem for them. The other is Apex Fire Department has reported to us numerous times that they have poor coverage actually in their station on New Hill Holloman Road. So once the top, the project is complete, the county will have 13 towers covering the county. These all range in height from 300 feet up to 500 feet. In fact, a little over half of them will be above 400 to 500 feet. And as you've seen on the coverage maps, we expect this to greatly improve coverage in that part of the county. And we definitely appreciate your support. So I don't know if you ask questions now or wait, so.
Happy to have council ask questions of Mr. Higgins now if he'd like. All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Higgins, hang, take a second. So let me see if council has questions directly for you. Remember his role? He is the technology IT director, is that right?
IT director and chief technology officer.
Chief technology officer. I do have a question. This is exclusive to Wake County, this tower system?
Correct. And we actually, in the agreement that we are working, the land lease agreement, we are working with the Town of Cary and the Town of Apex on, we have hardcoded in that agreement that we will not allow cellular providers on, just due to, you know, potential for frequency interference and those type things.
How about neighboring counties close to, I mean, how does that integrate into the technology?
So obviously, our signal weeds over into other counties, so it doesn't stop at the border. So we're generally one to 10, 12, 15 miles on, on the other side of the county. But from an interoperability standpoint, we do have tech channels that run on our system that allow public safety agencies to switch over to common channels, and we share those with Johnston County and surrounding counties all around, of course.
Can I follow up with that about the cell usage? So do, are all those towers non-cellular sharing?
Except for one, and that is the Wake Forest Tower. And to be honest, I don't know the history of how that cellular company that has a lease with the county got on that tower. It was actually in the early 2000s before I took over management of it, and we just maintained that relationship. So one out of the towers that we have currently has Sprint on it.
And the reason is, you said interference can occur with the?
So that is one of the primary reasons. The other is they upgrade technology quite often, so if you followed that technology, five years ago, it was 1X RTT, then EVD, then EVD 3O. Now it's 4G, getting ready to be 5G. And what we have seen is they are on our towers all the time, requesting upgrades and problematic for us from a loading standpoint. We obviously have to make sure our towers remain in spec from a loading standpoint, but also just long-term maintenance, they are, they are on the towers quite a bit. So it's been, it's been a problem for us at the Wake Forest site.
And are these towers built in a way that as the technology changes for you guys too, would that be easy to change out? And I'm not sure if it changes the fastest.
Yes, so today, we have 10 existing towers, and as part of our upgrade, moving from analog technology to digital technology. Very little, if anything, is occurring at the tower with the exception of new antennas at the top, obviously, new electronics in the building that is located next to the tower. And typically, I think they run a new antenna line so that the system is pretty much refreshed from that standpoint. But little to no maintenance to the tower and an upgrade, unless you're in a situation where you have some capacity issues in, on the tower from a loading point of view and you're adding additional, you know, microwave antennas or something like that, you might have to address loading. But generally, you don't.
Is, I'm sorry, is the height set in a way basically just as high, as low as possible to fill in those gaps? Is that how you came up with the 400 for this?
Yeah, and I actually have some, our, Bill Wagner with Mission Critical Partners, he's a consultant that's helping us on the project. Couple of things there, he can talk more about the RF specifics, but for the county, it's kind of an economics thing. Our spec with our vendor that builds the system and manages the system for us is to provide 96 percent coverage portable in the street for our law enforcement and, and public safety folks. And we can do that with 13 towers. We have 10 today, the additional three will make that even better. And so these towers are not cheap, particularly when we have the equipment on there, in the 1.5 to 1.7 million dollar range. So the fact that we can do that with 13 towers is significant savings to taxpayers and absolutely ongoing maintenance costs that we actually cost share with all of the municipalities and agencies that use the system. So that's, that's the primary reason that we try to go as high as possible so we don't have to duplicate with number of towers.
Is part of your job scope to climb up there and change that antenna?
Absolutely not. I have a gentleman that works for me and he did that in a prior lifetime, and he's been up the ones-on-70, thousand-some feet up. And yeah, not me, not me.
All right. I don't see anything else, so thank you, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you.
I'll turn this back over to Mr. Johnson to see if he has any other evidence to present.
If there are technical issues beyond, and I know Councilmember Gant, you had, had questions, if you want Mr. Wagner to come up here, he can explain. if you want Mr. Wagner to come up here, he can explain how the interoperability works between the radio frequencies. If you're interested in hearing that, I'm happy to have he can fill in that gap if you'd like to.
That's good.
Okay. The important thing I did want to point out, and actually, Mr. Higgins referred to it in his presentation, this tower will serve Apex Fire Police and Public Works as well as a lot of other agencies, including some of the bus services and RDU and various other agencies. So it's very much a shared service around the county that's critical to providing public safety. In terms of the site itself, you know, and I know you've got your checklist to go by, but it's certainly compatible with the industrial zoning or recommended land use in that area of the county. It's using an existing public facility to provide the service. And the great part, as Ms. Mayo mentioned, is the existing vegetation will help provide the vegetative screening and coverage that's necessary and required under your ordinance. It meets those district supplemental standards that are required, as Ms. Mayo confirmed. And the impact is limited because of where it's located and how it's being located. The environmental impact, again, is limited because of where it is in an industrial-type area. An impact on public facilities by its very nature, it doesn't adversely impact any public facilities or services. In fact, it enhances them because of the whole purpose of providing and improving the communication service for our public safety in the county. And in addition, and finally, standards of the ordinance, as Ms. Mayo confirmed, we meet those standards. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have, and I can have any of my experts up here answer any questions you may have because we want to make sure those are answered. But we really don't have any further presentation given the city's presentation and recommendation and Mr. Higgins.
Mr. Johnson, this being a future public asset.
Yes.
Would a non-commercial entity such as, say, an amateur radio society have any possibility of any placement of repeaters or anything like that on there?
Mr. Higgins can speak to that more directly, but as he mentioned, this is primarily for public safety and just the risk associated with that would make that not likely just because of maintenance, not wanting others on that tower to risk public safety as vital as it is to the community. I've done this work for 30 years in the cellular industry and time after time, obviously, there have been requests to go on public safety towers, including the Highway Patrol Towers, which has declined because the Highway Patrol doesn't want cellular into others on their towers because of the critical nature and the critical services those towers provide.
All right, thank you, Mr. Higgins.
And in concurrence with what Mr. Higgins also said in that regard.
All right, let me see if there's anyone else to, has questions on evidence?
Any other questions?
Nope, all right, it doesn't look like it. So at this time, thank you, Mr. Johnson. So at this time, there being no opposition, I'll ask staff if they have any non-repetitive rebuttal. All right, and I guess at this point, you have nothing else further to add?
I have nothing.
All right, so with that, is there a closing argument by staff or applicant?
I did my.
I think you just did. You did a good summation, all right. At this time, I'll ask council members to take a look at their checklist and to see if you have anything that you feel like you want to ask this time, anything that's been somehow overlooked. All right, not hearing anything, we'll come back to that in a second. I'll close the public hearing at this time and ask council to deliberate over their notes and to see if there's anything that concerns them. If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming out and working through our quasi-judicial public hearing process. That concludes our public hearings. We now move to the, we'll move through old business and unfinished business since there is none, so we move straight to new business. There is a parcel that the town owns that town manager thinks maybe we don't need it anymore. So let's find out. Make a presentation, Mr. Town Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for your time. This is new business item number one. The town owns a parcel of land at Culvert Street in Tostel. We were approached by a citizen who desires to purchase a piece of land to move a house to. Checked with staff, staff can see no public purpose for this piece of land and we're asking you tonight if you would like to consider this piece of land to be surplus. As you can see, and you had it in your staff report, the tax records show it's about .17 acres. A neighbor had it surveyed when they were purchasing their property. It's a little smaller than that per the survey, .15, 6 acres. So it's a small lot, oddly shaped, as you can see. But again, it's owned by the public and there really is no public purpose to maintaining the asset. So we're asking if the council would like to consider declaring it surplus and beginning the process to sell the parcel.
All right, are there questions for the town manager?
What is that process? If we declare it surplus, how do we go about getting it to end user, buyer?
So if the council were to adopt the resolution that you have in your packet tonight, that is a declaration of surplus. We would then come back when we receive an offer for the purchase. We would then come back to the council with another resolution that the attorney's office will prepare that will begin the upset bid process. So it's a very public process and very deliberate. One can make an offer, they need to make a deposit with the clerk for a portion of the offer price. The offer gets, or the fact that this parcel is up for upset bid gets advertised in the paper. Other people can then come and make another bid. And the statutes contain a formula for how much more the next highest bid must be. And each one of those cycles takes up to 10 days to work through. So it's very regimented, it's all laid out very clearly in state statutes and we've done this before and we do just follow it right to the letter.
There's like a starting bid, low bid, like do you start at tax value? How's that price determined?
Just to make an offer.
First offer kicks it off.
So we've had a market analysis done on this. You know, you can see the tax records show it to be valued at 75,000. The market analysis that we have is closer to 20. So it's, you know, it's a remnant parcel of land, but it still potentially could be built upon if other legal requirements and zoning requirements are met.
And what's the current zoning on this?
I don't know that. We can, it's in the small-town character overlay district. Planning director will look up the underlying zoning.
And I guess a follow-up for Diane would be, are there any requirements for vegetation or sidewalks associated with that kind of zoning?
It's in the small-town character area, so it has special requirements, but it does not include any kind of buffers or vegetation and it's an existing lot, so it doesn't have any requirements like that. It would not be required to build sidewalks.
Is there a motion?
Well, Diane checking on the.
For the current zoning? This looks like a smaller lot at the bunch that are there. Is it one of the smaller ones? Lot shape and smaller?
.17, truly small.
Yes, it is a small and oddly shaped lot. So I didn't click through to see the exact sizes of the other ones, but you can see in your staff report.
They look bigger than this, for the most part.
It's on medium density and it is in the small-town character overlay district.
What, how many, so how would that work out for a number of units? One unit could go on that small size of a lot?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Right.
One small.
I'll try to answer any other questions, but we just wanted to bring this to council and see what your intention was with this piece of land.
See, we can put it up for upset bids if we so wish and at the end, we can just say no if we so desire not to.
That's correct. You're under no obligation to sell the land even if you begin the bid process. You can at any time say, no, we're not interested in selling.
Are you going to say something, councilman?
No.
I don't think she would agree with that.
No, no, I'm good.
The only thing I would say is what's the benefit to our keeping the property, you know, in our possession versus someone possibly who is local and they're having it? What's the benefit? Who benefits more or how do people benefit more? Whether we keep it or if someone keeps it and does something with it?
Staff could not determine a public purpose for this piece of land. That's the only reason we're bringing it forward. So it's really too small to consider it a park for public access. We don't need it for utilities, we don't need it for roads. So there really wasn't, there's no reason to maintain it as an asset or to, you know, really have it as a liability because if someone gets hurt on that piece of land, we own it. You know, there is some benefit to if adjacent property owners wish to purchase it to have a bigger lot, they certainly could do that through the upset bid process as well. So it's just.
That answers my question, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And the town can't, is the town allowed to offer it for sale to one of the adjoining landowners or does it have to go through this process?
It has to go through this process, yes, sir.
You said one of those neighbors brought it up to us?
No, sir.
Somebody else did.
Yes, sir.
My only concern is just loss of green space. I mean, if somebody puts something there, we're going to lose that green space.
And if it were in a different location, I'd agree with you. I think the location, I mean, it's on Culvert Street, if that tells you anything. It's called Culvert Street.
Does that supposed to mean it's low lying or something? Is that the Culvert's being?
Well, historically, yeah, the Culvert.
So I, I mean, I'm personally okay putting this through the process. I would like to somehow, if we can, notify the adjoining neighbors that, you know, are going, that this land is going through this process. So if they're interested in it, they are made aware of it. I don't know if that's.
Do we sign? Do we put out a public visual sign on a piece of property that's going through a bid process?
The statute just requires us to publish it. That would be published in the newspaper.
Okay.
We could do more than the statute.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we certainly would be able to notify the immediately adjacent neighbor. Matter of fact, I think the immediately adjacent neighbor is in the room right now, so.
I think it would be a neighborly thing to do. If I lived next to a piece of property that was being surplus, I would appreciate the opportunity to know about it, whether it was, whether it was a person or an organization or a government that was putting it up for sale.
So the only way I guess we can, for lack of a better word, have control is zoning, like what it's allowed to become. That's the only way, right to your concerns to like, is the zoning is the only way?
Right, it is zoned to, a house could be built on it.
And I think the other piece that I heard is if the, if for whatever reason, the offers don't seem reasonable or fair, there's a process whereby which we don't, we don't have an obligation.
We just deny it.
To sell. So, but this process, this is step one, which is to say it's surplus, we don't have a plan for it, right?
Correct.
That's all we're asking for tonight is since we don't have a plan for it, let's declare it surplus. I think that would be the right thing to do.
I would expect we'd put it for sales. Every piece of property that goes for sale has some sort of a sign on it, so I would think that we would notify the area that way, too.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to put it up for.
For surplus?
So the motion is to adopt the resolution that was contained in the packet?
Yes, adopt the resolution for surplus that was provided by staff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. So we have a motion and a second to adopt that resolution. Discussion?
I think it's a great idea to put a for sale sign on it.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
I've noted.
Yeah, do a little bit more than we have to.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I agree, though it's a little piece of greenery that goes away if we do sell this. And the troubling situation that bothers me at the same time, keeping it back, maybe we could use the money someplace else for some piece of property that's more valuable. We'll see, we'll see out of the upset bid process whether we want to do this or not.
That's a good point.
No reason to.
Well.
I'm going to go down, I haven't had a chance to look at it. I'm going to go down and look at it, too.
The proceeds, the proceeds could always be considered in the same way that we do fee and lieu for parks is put it in a bucket with some other funds and see if we can't do something else with it. And that could be green related, green space related somewhere else. I mean, we don't have to decide that tonight, but.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion before I call for the vote?
I want to chime in, I just, I don't like, I don't like this very much and I think it's going to disrupt the area for little gain from our part, even though maybe there'll be some gain. I, I just don't think, I wouldn't want this being sold next to me and I think that the chances of a new house being on there are relatively high if we fall through with this and that does not really appeal to me very much in this area.
Would you like to have the opportunity to buy it if it was next to you?
Yeah, I would like that. And I don't think we should be picking who buys, who wins, though, so that's why, I would rather, I'd rather it sit like this than someone else to be able to win it, though.
Sure.
So that's why I'm thinking.
What do you think about, you know, the point that was made about if something happens on that property and we own it, then we're liable for something?
I, I mean, I'm not sure if you were going on there, but I suppose that's a small.
I had not thought about that, but.
I think our liability is minimal.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I know what's on there, it looks like just grass and trees, but. And public use now, that's hard to think about, may not be the case in the future or two. And we'd lose that chance.
From a, from a utility point of view, so the Electric Water Sewer Utility and from the streets view of it, we don't foresee any long-term need for it. And again, the really only other public use then is, you know, a park and it's really not big enough to do a park with, you know, if you want people to actually use it.
Right.
So we did examine, you know, what, what could it get used for and specifically do our businesses, the utilities, have a need for it in the future? And because of where this is in a very established part of town, all the utilities are in place, so.
Yeah, I understand uses like that, but, and I understand like a park normally needs more space, but I think things can be made smaller. If you talk about like a community garden in the vicinity here, that doesn't need a ton of space and it could be used for that purpose, I would think. That's probably big enough for a community garden.
I think, does it have to have a use of such period? You know, is it okay to keep it as, as just a green space, is I think.
There is some value in that, I don't think it's that much.
But I think we should go through the process and there's no reason that we have to accept the bid and we have denied bids since I've been on the council at least twice, at least twice.
But we wouldn't have very good justification in denying a bid because of a person, right?
We don't have to have any justification.
You don't have to sell your property because you put up for sale.
Yeah, there's no. Yeah, there's no, there's no justification needed. You can just say no. That's all.
Well, that is controversial, but let's, let's call for the vote and see how this falls out, so. All right, all in favor of the motion to accept the resolution for this to be declared surplus? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
No.
All right, Mr. Jensen, can you, did you say aye?
I, I said yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure. I couldn't quite hear down there. All right, thanks. That passes three to two. That was my count, one, two, three, to two. So we'll move forward with that, Mr. Town Manager, and the next step is the next step. All right, thank you. So that takes care of new business and there being no closed session. We do have the one last item that Councilman Moyer has wanted to discuss, school resource officers. And so I'll turn the floor over to you, Councilman.
Yes, yeah, thank you. So just looking at the upcoming budget and, and school safety obviously being a hot item right now, and looking what Wake County Public Schools provides our schools in the area of school resource officers and onsite, you know, law enforcement protection, which is pretty minimal, and the town funds extra positions. I'd like us to, and the county provides none, no protection for elementary schools. I'd like for us to move forward with maybe one school resource officer in the upcoming budget. Kinda like as a, like a, I guess for lack of a better term, maybe like a rover that can kinda go from elementary school to elementary school for the next budget year. Assess the situation, come back to his manager and management and recommend additional. Or her, you know, coverage for whatever is needed at elementary schools. So, and hopefully, maybe we can, through this process, also petition county commissioners and Wake County Public Schools for reimbursement for this position. But I, but I'd like for us to, to fund at least one of those positions in the upcoming budget.
So this is an open conversation? I assume you're asking for input at this point, Councilman?
That and support from my fellow council members to, to move forward with this recommendation.
So thanks. So I'll go next, since I did attend a meeting, I guess over a year ago, with APD and other law enforcement with the school system. Also not the electeds, but the actual school system's chief of staff. And what I found is the reason we didn't have enough or an SRO for every middle school at that time was because the formula to decide whether a school gets an SRO is based on, in quotes for the record, "at risk", and your poverty numbers in schools, which I think is archaic way of looking at need for SROs. And so that's sort of where we came from. So we were asking for help at that time and didn't get it. So there were some other things that came out of those conversations. So I think that I'd like to start with Mr. Moyer's suggestion. And then related to thinking about what we do after this year. I think we should have a larger conversation with the new chief of staff, because Dr. Conley has got a new job with the chairwoman of Monika Johnson-Hossler and some other folks and sort of problem solve related to that. And then some other, other levels of government that we can work alongside with so that we do this in the right way, so.
And to clarify, right now, they're in the high school, there's one in the high school or two in the high school, and then one in the middle school, each, each middle school currently, and none in the elementary schools.
Right, and we fund the middle school for everyone, because we had one that was sort of doing this. He was going to different schools. And so the way I look at SROs is as someone who's like a face in the school, who is like an essential faculty, you know, staff, and sort of gets to know the students. And I think we have a, a good program here. And so, but it's not been good everywhere, and so I think we have to do it the right way, so.
So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, but the Wake County funds one for the high schools. We fund the second one for the high schools. We fund the middle school, and currently none for the elementary school?
We fund, the state funds, and I'm gonna read from the memo that council was provided, about thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars a year for one high school SRO. An additional one will be paid up to twenty-one thousand for the second SRO if the municipality and the high school principal agree. So a total of about, do the math, fifty-nine thousand dollars a year we get from the high school SROs. We do not get money for middle school. Those are funded by taxpayers.
Fifty-nine is about half of two, what's the salary, about seventy, I think?
Yeah, I'll probably load it up.
Yeah.
I also would say, too, related to that, is there are efforts to not only, to have more wraparound services for children? So to scale up where our ratio is off on school health nurses, on behavioral health, you know, on other things that our children need in the schools. So there are efforts to do that, and I want to continue to work on that with my other hat and sort of inform the group related to those efforts. But it is about like more wraparound, like social workers and school health nurses, and not just the policing piece of it.
And I was gonna make a comment very similar to that. The discussion out there is to provide more mental health services to catch these, these issues that may come up beforehand instead of having, you know, a reactive position to things. And something I haven't heard a whole lot of discussion about is safety assessments for schools. My daughter's high school, one of her high school teachers did an interesting assignment where she had all of the high school students in her class write down how someone could possibly get in their school. And they came up with a list of almost a hundred, a hundred ways of, that someone who's putting them in danger could get into the school. And that's with a brand-new school. So I would like to see maybe a safety assessment done on all these schools and try to address some of the safety problems that we might have. Doors that may not lock. I know that they put in more safety, like at Balcom, I know there's a camera at the front door they lock, you know, when you're not going in and out of the buildings at ingress or egress. And they have to state your purpose before they will let you in. So they are doing some things, but I think there's probably still more things that we can look at. Having law enforcement, you know, walk the school grounds and say, okay, this is a, this is an entry point where there might be a problem. So safety assessments is something I would love to see.
And I think, I think this is good also to, as long as we, Apex, don't have Apex schools, we have to work with the county to make sure that, first of all, it is their purview. And so we have to be working with them and in conjunction with them. So the communications have to be there to make sure that we're doing that, as opposed to just taking it upon ourselves. Certainly, if we have an officer there, an SRO in a school. I know the SROs go through various training and that are very unique to schools. You know, I mean, it's similar to what you have in a business, but when you're in a school, you're a different environment. But I think, I think these are good things, and I wanna make sure that we, we direct them to the town and say, how can we help you do this? Because this is your, it's your responsibility. As long as the county is funding the schools and providing the Wake County Public School System, they have the responsibility, and we can communicate that to them. And I'd like, you know, for us, we are in touch with parents very near to where we are. We also know we have school board representatives that live throughout the county and in neighborhoods and do that representation. So if I could bring this back to the, kinda the question that Councilman Moyer brought up is, do, do we as a council want to ask staff to augment, hopefully it's a minor augmentation, but augment the budget to fund one additional SRO for the purpose of moving throughout the elementary schools in Apex that are not covered by an officer? And I think the roving idea, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the number could be done under a hundred and fifty K with the vehicle and the fully loaded employee and all that, including operating budget. Is that about right?
We did add back two police positions, so we would just take one of those. So the budget, the bottom line would not change.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the right way to go, is the one police officer, not the detective, I don't assume.
We'll, we'll.
Become the SRO.
We'll have that conversation with the, the chief of police and allocate his resources.
Okay, can I start out that I care about, you know, safety of the kids, I think, like everybody does. But there's a lot, there's a lot of elementary schools in Apex, and it would be a, my impression of the biggest risk would be someone from the outside coming in and trying to do harm. And I'm not sure a roving person would be much more effective than, than the police that would respond to it. And so, and I'm not sure there's, you know, internal kids bringing guns to school, I guess, could be a possibility, but I think that's more of a middle school, high school problem than a elementary school. So I think, I want, I wanna be a little cautious on this and make sure that it's actually a, a risk that's worth spending some money on. And I think if you're gonna do it right, you put them in all the schools so that they can be able to react to someone from the outside. And I'm not sure we're willing to go down that route, you know, right now, and maybe not, maybe not in the future, I'm not sure. But, yeah, I just, there's a lot of things in the budget that are worth funding, and that, that one, I think it's something to, to get more, get more information about, the actual risks at, at the elementary schools.
So you would like to see some data from Wake County? Is that what you want, maybe ask the school system to provide them data on incidences or anxiety?
Yeah, maybe you can look at, you can look national. But also, like, is it useful to have, if we're gonna convert one of those that could be doing something else with the police? Is it worth, is a roving person at elementary schools around the area, is that a good use of their time? I don't know the answer to that compared to what the position was being funded for originally.
So, okay, so Mr. Moyer, would you consider then, since authority in the budget, there wouldn't be any change of the budget, that there is a time to get some research and some numbers?
So, um, I think.
So staff would know to direct sort of what the, what that person's job description would be?
Yeah, so I think to the mayor's point, right, this is, we have to work in conjunction with Wake County schools. And, and I absolutely agree with you, Mr. Gant. The rover, if you will, between the, I think there's six elementary schools maybe in, in Apex, is that? There's five, so. The, working in conjunction with Wake County, maybe that SRO can help us, that rover can help us provide data to Wake County school that says, we need to fund more positions here. Instead of, because I, because I absolutely think it's easier for somebody inside to respond right away, right, than, than kinda somebody who might be moving throughout the community. But I think maybe if we go down that, that one-person path, and then we can continue to work with our elected, you know, people in the, the public school system and commissioners and stuff to provide that proper funding or data points of, hey, this is, you know, because if you look at floor plans, too, to your point, right, the floor plan, the Balcom, for example, I mean, okay, the front door locks and there's a camera, but there's so many access points that anybody could get in anywhere, you know? So the, the old model of, of schools is so open, too, that, you know, maybe that SRO can help us with going to Wake County schools and pitching the needs.
And like I said, I will continue with the path of what I'm working on already with health related to public safety, childhood trauma and all that. Because there is a piece about like, are kids anxious and all that, you know, dealing with all that stuff, too? And I am, I will continue working on those things.
Yeah, I, I would like to see some data, even Wake County or North Carolina data, working with our school board or public school system, to see if there is a, what they would do. So if we had SROs in an elementary, what incidences are they addressing in the elementary school? Because we know in, what they would address in middle and high school. But elementary school, you know, are they taking guns from kids, you know, bringing them in their backpacks? Are they stopping fights in elementary school, that type of thing? So I would like to see some data before I make a decision personally.
So one, maybe, it sounds like one outcome, and I know this was, you brought this up, Councilman, but one outcome, I think, for tonight would be to ask staff, and I'm looking directly at the town manager, but to, to find out some things that if there was an SRO that was a rover, what might that job description look like and what kind of policies might they follow? So, and, and maybe in addition, what kind of statistics or, or information might be there for them? So that, that going from school to school, at least elementary level schools, beyond just being a presence, you know, so maybe along the lines of meeting with the teachers and helping them provide some safety for events when that, that SRO is not onsite. But at least be sort of the point person who's always thinking about security of the elementary school, right? Teachers need, wanna teach, right? Principals just wanna facilitate, principate, what's the word? Right? But, but if there's somebody who's day job, night job, whatever you wanna call it, they wake up in the morning thinking, how can I keep my school safe today? If there's one person who goes from school to school and they meet with different people, maybe that's part of what they can do. But that may take a little bit of, you know, draft, brief draft of what that role might be. And then if you, and maybe some data, statistics that we've heard tonight to go along with that. And then if you have something that we can take a look at and determine if we need to have a second workshop, then we can get back together if we need to?
Yeah, I don't, because it's not gonna impact the budget.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if we need a workshop specifically, a budget workshop specifically for this.
Okay.
You know, the budget could be adopted and we could be continuing to work on this. We would just need to, you know, I would just let the chief know.
Just a little more direction.
Hold this, hold this position. Don't, don't fill it with another function until the council determines if they, they wish to.
Yeah, and I think that makes sense. If we're not making, if we're not making a change to the budget dollars, and in fact, this is staying within a department, this would just be an internal change at the department level. You certainly could mean it that yourself.
Really what we need from the council is policy direction. Do you want a roving SRO? And you need some information to determine if you wish to make that your policy.
That's what I'm hearing.
And we'll implement from there.
I can see a roving SRO in part for community relations. I mean, you start community, community relations with kids when they're that small. And the security. In terms of securing the schools and the risk for children in a school, there's something like sixty-seven thousand elementary schools in the United States. And if you look at how often something really happens at one of those schools, the probability of something happening is relatively low. That's, you know, are we securing something that is secure enough? I'm not sure. Looking at the statistics, it seems to be that way. There's Sandy Hook as an elementary school. That was a disaster. When the disasters hit, they're horrible. But at the same time, I was looking at statistics and there's about three hundred and thirty-five kids, children that are killed each year just getting to school and getting back home. So in terms of that sort of situation, obviously you can't prevent that. This tries to prevent something that might happen, but very, very, very likely will not happen. So I look at it as a community, community relationship situation. And I don't think the guy has to be at every school, but I think it's great that he goes to schools, he presents himself to the kids. I think there's an interaction there with the right person, like Jacques was a super guy when he was doing that. So from that standpoint, I could see doing it, but I'm not sure that we need an SRO officer in every school at all. We'll see how it goes.
Okay, I don't know that we need a motion. I think Mr. Town Manager's got a whole page full of notes there, so. And the chief, yes.
Right.
Chief is recording. He's always recording.
You're writing and he's gotta hear.
Yeah. So thank you for, thank you for a good conversation, Council, and Councilman Moyer for bringing that up for discussion. And I think we've covered that, so I'll leave it with this. If there are any follow-on thoughts, feel free to contact the town manager tomorrow or a later time. With that, we've reached the end of our planned agenda, and if...
And if nobody's jumping up raising their hand, I'll declare our meeting done. All right, so we are adjourned. Thank you.